Okay. Good evening, Mayor and One. I call a meeting to order. My name is Mayor Richard Stewart. I'll be chairing tonight's public hearing and council meeting. I want to welcome you all to our council chambers this evening. This is a public hearing into the bylaws that will be read to you in a moment and throughout the public hearing by the city clerk. Council for the City of Coquitlam has given first reading to these bylaws and has directed that a public hearing be held. So how it will work is this: Staff from the city's Planning and Development Department will present a summary of each of the proposed bylaw that's on the table at that moment. The floor will then be open to anyone in attendance that wishes to provide his or her views on that proposed bylaw. Those that have pre-registered will be given the first opportunity to speak on the bylaw we're dealing with. So there's some rules. Council has asked that I enforce the following policies. First of all, it's a public hearing. It's an opportunity for anyone who has a view on the proposed bylaw to make that view known to council members. We're here with an open mind and we're here to listen to your input. No one has prejudged the outcome of these applications. However, it isn't a question and answer, period. It's not an opportunity to debate the merits of any of the proposed bylaws with either council members, staff, or with anyone in the audience who might have a different perspective than your own. So council asks that you all restrict your comments to the proposed bylaw, that you be as brief and concise as possible, and we're asking speakers to respect a five-minute time limit in order that everyone who wishes to speak can do so. If you have more good stuff and you haven't said it already, you can certainly get into the back of the line and you can have another five minutes as we go through. But the intent is that we allow a respectful and as welcoming as possible opportunity for everyone to speak. We recognize that not everyone speaks in front of the microphone every day, and so this may be a nerve-wracking time if you do want to address us. So we have some other rules, and these are specific to making sure this is a welcoming opportunity to speak. We don't allow clapping, or booing, or cheering, or jeering, or heckling, or anything else. We just want to hear from every one of you that wants to speak, and we want you to feel comfortable in speaking. So as Chair of this hearing, I reserve the right to conclude any presentation that doesn't relate to the bylaw at hand, that becomes abusive in any way, that becomes repetitive of views that the speaker has already made known to council members. And there's a fourth bullet tonight, largely because there's two elements, there's two of the bylaws before us that are a little bit more complex. We need the comments that are brought to the public hearing to be about the subject of the public hearing, and that is land use. Is this the right land use? Is the land use designations, or the land use zoning, or whatever, appropriate for the parcel that's before us? It's not about council policies, or about larger perspectives on all kinds of stuff. It's about land use. A public hearing is always about land use, so we urge you to make sure your comments relate to that one subject area. If you also have some written comments and you want them to be part of the public record, we'd ask you to please submit them before I get to third and final, for the third and final time, are there any other speakers to this item? Hand them into the clerk's office, and they can be then part of the public record. After we close an item on the public hearing, we can no longer receive any information from the public. That's actually a court ruling. Immediately following the adjournment of the public hearing tonight, a regular council meeting will convene in order that council may give consideration to items on this agenda, as well as items on the city council's agenda. However, if during the public hearing, council requests further information related to an item, consideration of that item can be deferred pending receipt of the requested information. In other words, for some item, for one or two items, we may not make the decision. Later tonight, we may make it at a subsequent meeting. I will now call on Mr. Gilbert to introduce the other bylaws on tonight's agenda, and Planning and Development staff to make a presentation on the first item.
Thank you, Your Worship. First item this evening is an application to amend the Citywide Official Community Plan Bylaw 3479 as follows. Citywide Official Community Plan Amendment Bylaw Number 4575 will confirm the location and types of school sites that are required by the School District 43 in northeast Coquitlam and remove the school sites that are not required. Citywide Official Community Plan Amendment Bylaw Number 4576 will remove three affordable housing sites currently designated in the OCP in northeast Coquitlam.
Mr. Gilbert.
Your Worship and members of council, my name is Michael Daliwal, Development Planner with the city. Item number one, our staff initiated bylaw amendments to the Official Community Plan, or OCP. Bylaw Number 4575-2015 proposes several text amendments and map amendments to the northeast Coquitlam Area Plan and associated neighborhood plans, specifically the Lower Height Creek, Upper Height Creek, Smiling Creek, and Partington Creek neighborhood plans. The proposed amendments to the OCP correspond with School District 43's June 16th announcement, confirming the required school sites in northeast Coquitlam to serve the growing Burke Mountain community. The proposed bylaw confirms the required school sites, removes references to school sites not required by School District 43, and identifies two sites as special study This map shows the four confirmed school sites, which are three elementary school sites identified on the map with the letter E, and one joint middle school and high school site identified on the map with the letter M and S. This map shows four school sites that are not required by SD 43. The two sites on the right side of the map will be developed based on its current land uses: compact low-density residential and townhouse residential. The two sites on the left of the map without the purple arrows, 3504 David Avenue and 3,000 Highland Drive, are currently designated school and park, and at this time will be identified as special study areas. Sites that are identified as special study areas will require property owners to undertake further public consultation as part of the future OCP amendment applications for these sites. Future land use options will also be subject to a technical review, including the assessment of park needs, servicing needs, and infrastructure needs, and must consider the adjacent land uses and the character of the neighborhood. The second bylaw in this application, Bylaw Number 4576-2015, proposes to remove three affordable housing sites in northeast Coquitlam. The city is currently preparing a housing affordability strategy, and within that strategy, Objective 2 promotes affordable living, which focuses on the entire cost of living, including housing and transportation. Key ways to reduce transportation costs and enhance the ability to pay for housing are to locate specific affordable housing sites near transit, services, and employment opportunities. This map shows the one affordable housing site that will be retained on the left of the map at 1358 Coast Meridian, and the three sites to be removed, highlighted by the orange lines. If this bylaw is supported, these three undeveloped sites will be developed with either townhomes or rowhomes, consistent with their current land uses. Staff recommends second, third, and fourth and final reading to OCP Amendment Bylaw Number 4575-2015, and staff recommends second, third, and fourth and final readings to OCP Amendment Bylaw Number 4576-2015.
I have no list, so are there any speakers to this item? Mr. Burpee, come on forward.
Good day, sir. Good evening, Your Worship, council. Sandy Burpee, 985 Corona Crescent. I'm here this evening representing the Tri-Cities Homelessness Housing Task Group. A few days ago, after reading notice of this bylaw, I was going through some old correspondence and found a couple of letters to council of the time which I feel are germane to this particular bylaw amendment. The first one, both of them were written by myself on behalf of the Tri-Cities Housing Coalition, which was one of the predecessor organizations of the current iteration of the task group. This letter went on the 17th of May 2005, and it was on the occasion of starting the planning process for the Smiling Creek Neighborhood Plan. In this letter, I reminded council that the northeast Coquitlam Area Plan stated that council will work with other public bodies and the private sector to encourage that a proportion of new units and large-scale developments are available for non-market and/or special needs housing. Potential special needs or affordable housing sites shall be identified in neighborhood plans. And then a follow-up letter on the 20th of October 2005, which I wrote after open house number three for Smiling Creek Neighborhood Plan, which presented the preferred land use concept. And my final paragraph: "Incorporation of appropriate sites for non-market affordable and/or special needs housing in kneecap neighborhood plans is a welcome step forward in the creation of an inclusive community. We applaud the City of Coquitlam for taking this initiative." So that was on the occasion of two sites being identified in the Smiling Creek Plan. At the time, and certainly since then, we've understood that these three sites were really just placeholders, because, as Michael said in his presentation, clearly access to services and transit are not compatible with affordable housing sites. And also recognize that the wording in neighborhood plans did not commit the city to donate those three sites to some form of affordable housing, but at least their presence in the plan gave us some confidence that the city would collaborate with other partners and provide some form incentives for the creation of affordable or special needs housing here. And certainly partnerships are a significant component of the draft Housing Affordability Strategy framework, and partners, to be true partners, have to bring something to the table. So I understand the intent behind this bylaw and removing the three sites to bring compatibility with other area plans, but I would encourage the city that once these lands are sold, that the proceeds from those lands go into the Affordable Housing Reserve Fund to augment the stream that's currently coming from Step Three Density Bonusing. Once they're in the Affordable Housing Reserve Fund, they can enhance the initiatives that I believe will be identified for use of those funds in the Housing Affordability Strategy, and potentially even to purchase other sites that would be more suitable for affordable housing in the future. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. I want to apologize for being so slow to rule you out of order on your last point, because it isn't related to the land use on the site, but we do appreciate your comment.
You know, I was wondering if you were going to call me on that, but I thought...
Yeah, I'm just not very good at this job. Thanks. Are there any other speakers to this item? Former city councillor Neil Nicholson.
Thank you, Your Worship. Neil Nicholson, 1189 Eastwood Street, in the lovely city of Coquitlam. The last time that I spoke with most of you people, some of you were sitting here and some of you were sitting there, the mayor was kind enough to refer to me as being someone who often had sober second thought. I'm certainly sober, and I've been thinking about this since the public hearing notice came out, so this is probably the 23rd or 24th thought, but they've been pretty consistent all the way through. The good news is that when you think about it that long, it becomes quite refined, and consequently quite concise. Not having heard the mayor's opening remarks until I got here tonight, you might have the opportunity to call me out of order, and I'll try to avoid that. Bylaw proposes to remove the affordable housing designation from three city-owned properties on Burke Mountain. I have two issues. The first one is I don't understand why this is in a single report covering two quite different bylaws. One deals with school sites, one deals with these affordable housing sites. Their only connection is that they're both on Burke Mountain. I think they should have been separated for public comment. I'm sure they will be when it comes to voting on the bylaws, generally speaking, do one at a time. But of more significance, removing land use, there are two components, I think, to a change in land use: the land use that's desired, and the land use that's being abandoned. Speaking to the land use that's being abandoned, I think, still speaks to land use. The removal of these from affordable housing dedication is made, as staff pointed out, while council has not yet determined its affordable housing strategy. There are some points in it, and they've been referred to, but they're not council policy. They're not finally decided. They've not had the final bats at public input, I believe. Assets that were dedicated to a community purpose a number of years ago will now fall into the city's general pool without any commitment as to how that original purpose will be maintained. It's the wrong thing to do, an exchange for more appropriate assets. Land or cash would be acceptable. Limbo is not. Council should deny this request. Your future decisions should be based on an agreed policy framework, one that's been in process now for far too long. Council has a stop-doing list. Ad hocary should be on that list. Thank you. And thank you for not calling me out.
That's the last time.
Oh, maybe.
Are there any other speakers to this item? Any other speakers to this item? The third and final time, are there any other speakers to this item? Seeing none, I'll declare this item closed. Oops.
Sorry, could I just ask a question to the Chair? So if I have questions, can I still get questions answered from staff later, or is this the only time to receive answers to questions?
Mr. Clerk.
I know I ask it every time.
I think generally the best policy is if it's answers that may contribute to someone else here wanting to speak, those questions should be asked here because you would be precluding their ability to comment if it elicited new information or new insights, versus questions of clarification, or questions of receiving additional information at a future time prior to fourth and final reading. So I would offer that as advice to that question.
So clearly, before I close this item, now would be the time.
Okay. So my question is actually through the Chair for Staff, is I wasn't here at the time that the decisions were made to designate these as affordable housing, and I just want to understand the background of how these were, what were the factors involved in designating it as being affordable housing in the first place? Because we have to consider why it happened, so I know that it's okay to let it go.
Mr. McIntyre.
Your Worship, thank you, and good evening, Mayor and council, ladies and gentlemen. I'll offer some comments in this response, but I may have to look to an even more senior member here today, Councillor Reed, who was here at the city before I started in 2005. I think, as Mr. Burpee pointed out, there was in the overarching northeast Coquitlam Area Plan, kneecap, some general policies about affordable housing sites. And so that sort of set the overall direction. My understanding was that in at least one or two of the plans that was done before I arrived in 2005, and that would have been probably Upper Height Creek and Lower Height Creek, there were affordable housing sites that were identified. The next neighborhood plan that was done, and this was the first one done under my watch, was the Smiling Creek Neighborhood Plan. And through that process, I guess what we were doing, it was following up in some of the general directions from the area plan to look at that aspect of labeling affordable housing sites. And so the other two sites within Smiling Creek were identified through that process. Now, again, if Councillor Reed can cast any other light on this, I would welcome her comments as well.
And I'm sure Mr. McIntyre meant more experienced, we've got a person here rather than more senior. Councillor Reed.
I'm cruising here.
We'll activate your microphone, please.
Did you?
Nope.
There's no light bulb there. There you go.
How clever I am. Back in the day, when we first decided to develop Burke Mountain, it was sort of flown over in an airplane, and someone said, "Okay, well, we're looking down, and we'll put this area and call it Upper Height Creek, and this area Lower Height Creek, and this area Smiling Creek." And basically, the planners did a very general, and I can easily say 30,000-foot look at Burke Mountain. We recognized, and I know Mr. Burpee knows this, but we recognized at that time that there needed to be some affordable housing sites. And so as they started to draw plans, the planners of the day picked the sites that they thought would be most appropriate. But they picked them with the fact that this was going to be developed as a transit area, that we were going to have lots of buses running around up there and close transportation. And as it's turned out, the schools are late, the buses are almost negligible, and so we've ended up tonight coming to take a look, or rethink of what we did, and have to make other plans, because I, none of us, or I guess I can speak for myself only, that the buses are nonexistent, and for affordable housing, this is what people will be using, and it's so important to get the housing built, and I think there's probably better places we can do it. Does that help at all?
It does. A little bit. Arbitrary labeling is what I think we might call it. So then question, one last question then about the buses, because you opened up about the buses. Is there a bus on Victoria, and is there a bus on Coast Meridian for that southernmost affordable housing site across the street from Victoria Park? Through the Chair.
Mr. McIntyre. No, I'm going to go with Mr...
Your Worship, we'll check on that. Right now, my understanding is the bus goes up Coast Meridian to David, and I'm not sure if there's a bus route along Victoria down below. My understanding is it's up Coast Meridian to David in that area there.
So let's do this. We have an expert on bus routes right here in the council chambers, and I'm going to call, it's an unusual circumstance, but we're going to call upon Councillor Asmussen.
Well...
Never before have I looked to you for information. Go ahead.
I won't say thank you, Mayor Stewart.
Okay.
There is a bus that goes along Victoria. It's a community shuttle bus, operating out of Poco, and it runs along Victoria, down Cedar, bit of a milkrun type of route, but it's a community shuttle.
What's the frequency?
About every half hour, frequency, to an hour frequency. Half hours the peak, hour non-peak, roughly, I think.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, we've got some new information. I'll start again. Are there any other speakers to this item? Are there any other speakers to this item, the third and final time? Are there any other speakers to this item? Seeing none, and looking at my speakers button over here, I declare this item closed.
Thank you, Your Worship. Next item on the public hearing agenda, item two, is an application to enter into a Heritage Revitalization Agreement and Heritage Designation Bylaw for 1107 Carche Avenue. These are bylaw numbers 4568 and 4569.
Good evening, Mayor and council. I'm Jonathan Jackson, Development Planner with the City of Coquitlam. The site is located on the north side of Carche Avenue, between Marmont and Begnance Street, in the historical Laval Square area. The site is designated Neighborhood Attached Residential in the city's official community plan. The adjacent zoning of the site is to the east and west RS1, one-family residential; to the north, RT1, two-family residential; to the south, RT1, two-family residential; and RS3, one-family residential. And the site itself is zoned RS1, one-family residential. The current use of the site is a one-family Boeing, known as Maison Le Blanc. The proposed Heritage Revitalization Agreement process, the applicant is proposing to restore and rehabilitate Maison Le Blanc as part of a five-unit development that includes a two-lot subdivision, maintaining Maison Le Blanc on one lot, and proposing a quadruplex, four units, on the second lot. The applicant also proposes to provide further legal protection in addition to the proposed Heritage Revitalization Agreement by means of a Heritage Designation Bylaw, which will ensure that future alterations cannot be made to the exterior or the structure of the building if they are not in compliance with the Heritage Revitalization Agreement, unless the city first grants a heritage alteration permit. Staff are recommending all final readings to Heritage Revitalization Agreement Bylaw Number 4568 and Heritage Designation Bylaw 4569-2015. Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Jacksons? None. I have a speaker's list. Eric Patterson of Patterson Architecture, for the proponent, or the architect. Mr. Patterson.
Good evening, Your Worship, council, and ladies and gentlemen. My name's Eric Patterson of Patterson Architecture, and as you mentioned, we're the architects for the project. I've just got a few slides to quickly go through, just to bring everybody up to the same spot on the project. And starting with, as you saw in your staff report, the air photo showing the site outlined in red there, just a block and a half from the center of Laval Square, and a 3D massing study beside it there where you can see the Heritage House in the foreground with the duplexes forming a quadruplex in the back. Just briefly on the conservation process, you might have heard some of this before in our previous presentations, but this is the sequence we go through when we're looking at these historic buildings. We collect a lot of research, as you know, rooting around in archives and old directories, subdivision maps, which Coquitlam has a great set of, and you can see the original Fraser Mills subdivision plan there in the lower left. The site is outlined in red, so this is one of the key sites, very close to the core of Millardville, and you can see some of the character of early Millardville there in the other photograph, dirt roads and wooden sidewalks. And we get glimpses of the original buildings in the background, and these are quite valuable for us as conservation architects, because we can delve right into all kinds of interesting details, and you'd be surprised what you find. After that research is done, and we've written a brief to tell the story of the site and the families associated with it, we do record the building, we do as-found drawings, and we do a detailed condition survey, so we know what we're dealing with physically. And then this is all collected into what's called a Statement of Significance, or an SOS, which is an ironic acronym, perhaps. And this follows the Parks Canada format that is now used across the country for consistent consideration of conservation work. So the SOS contains a description of historic place, its heritage values, not just old, what is it actually about, and what are the physical things or character-defining elements that embody those values. The conservation plan grows from these documents, so this is actually sort of the working guideline for the project team, which includes, of course, the local government and the neighborhood, so everybody knows kind of what we're working with. And it guides everybody right through to the maintenance of the building long term, so this is actually on title in the bylaws. So five years or whatever from now, if somebody comes along and says, "I want to put a dormer on this thing," everybody can pull out this document and sort of see whether or not that's appropriate. Then we look at the rehabilitation side of things, and what are we going to do to intervene here to bring in our modern uses? Just again, another refresher on what are the three principal conservation procedures that are outlined in the standards and guidelines. So we don't talk about renovations. We talk about preservation, which in the lower left is an example of Fort Langley, where the building is sort of kept in its current state. Restoration, where you can bring something back to an earlier time if you have accurate documentation, and that is key. Rehabilitation is enabling compatible contemporary use, and you can see the Plastizart complex, one of the Ryan House there that was incorporated into that, so a new use was brought into an original house. The overall objective is to maintain the greatest amount of heritage values. Just briefly on the SOS for Maison Le Blanc, so there's some shots of the existing condition. I love tackling these buildings when they're like this, because I've done enough of them that I can see a diamond in the rough. And you can see on the lower left there that some of the, this is after we took off the vinyl siding, and some of the original window pattern starts to emerge. The description of the house is quite straightforward. Heritage values, so it's not just an old house, and whether it's nice-looking, it's all about association, so it's part of the early history of Coquitlam, obviously, and specifically the Francophone culture that came into Millardville. That was a pan-Canadian event. It's notable across the country that you'd get a culture moving across the country for economic opportunity, which grew into a social opportunity. And this house in particular has significance for its Francophone connections to four Quebec families. And then economic thing, where do people work? How is this house associated with economic history? Obviously, Fraser Mills played a big part in that. They provided the land, financing, agreements for sale. Building materials were cheap or low-cost. And then finally, we talk about history and aesthetics, which is kind of what most folks will think of as historic value, you know, is it a nice-looking building and is it old? But it's only part of the story. This one is interesting, because it has a lot of your West Coast Edwardian vernacular, but it has these eastern idioms in it, one of which is these two peak dormers facing the street, and we'll see more of that later. The upper-left photograph shows a bay window that we discovered. You can see the outline of the thin roof and the size of a bay window that was later removed and the siding patched. The character-defining elements, so I won't go into this long list, but these are the physical things that remain on the house that you need to pay attention to, even down the road when you come back to do other work on the house, perhaps, but certainly at this stage for us, these are the critical things that we want to be very careful with and restore and rebuild. You can see, you know, this mouse might work. There we go. We've got octagon-profile shingles in the gable end, which are set proud off the gable with this little portion here. We've got these nice timber brackets, wide barge boards. We've got these nice timber brackets, wide barge boards, the drop siding on the lower levels with the original colour coming through, quite faded, of course, and the narrow clapboards with a cream buff colour on the upper floors. Sorry? And the skylight, yeah. That was an ad hoc chimney that was added at some time later in the future. So just moving into the intervention itself, as staff alluded to, we've got the Maison Le Blanc here at the front corner, so it's staying more or less in its current location. The location of a building on a site is actually a character-defining element, so you do have to be careful about how you move these things around. And then the front duplex part of the quadruplex is here, adjacent to it, but you'll note it's set back further than the Maison Le Blanc, it's more forward to the street to give it prominence. And then we create these intensely-used little courtyards in the back, which serve multi-functions, obviously for vehicles, but also for an amenity space for the residents, for kids to play ball and whatnot. And then all the interstitial spaces around the buildings here in the white are obviously landscaping, and there's patios and things like that. It becomes kind of a townhouse-type layout, very intensely planned. Parking's always an issue with these projects. We're somewhat trying to fit a square peg in a round hole here, because they're very compact, detailed sites, especially with heritage values involved, where you're really shoehorning things in. And yet, we're trying to create lots of parking and manoeuvring for that parking and access to units, so, you know, you've got to be careful about how much you pave and dedicate the site to vehicles. Although we use nice paving materials and whatnot, you do need green space, and so it's a bit of a push and pull between satisfying parking and providing livable green space. On this site, though, partly driven by the market, each unit has two garages, two parking spaces in a garage, although the front one has one in the driveway there. So we ended up with more than the required parking, which is great, you know, to alleviate concerns about parking demand and whatnot. Theoretically, we could come forward needing the bylaw, saying, well, we did what's in your bylaw. But in this case, we were able to provide a couple of extra ones, so we think that's a big plus for the parking. And just would mention too, on parking, the consultant, CTS, did a shadow study of adjacent on-street parking, and that little diagram in the bottom there. And they identified nine legal curb parking spaces adjacent to the site. The design approach, just a few slides on how we came up with the infill. So some elements are derived from the heritage house, so you've got this simple box rectangular massing, it's very simple, there's not a lot of Ls or wings. Roof ridges are set parallel to the street, which is an eastern thing. Most of your western or British homes, it's a gable end facing the street, that's ubiquitous. But in this neighbourhood, the ridge is parallel to the street, and there you see the two dormers, which in this case are quite quirky, because they, I guess at some point, when they were building the house, decided they would link those two dormer roofs, which ends up, it's original. It's not the best-looking design perhaps, but it's kind of curious and grown to like it. The front duplex has a, we are very careful on how we designed this, so you've got a central door flanked by two windows here, and then dormers up above. Likewise, central door, two windows, dormers up above. On the lower floor, you've got, this is an entrance to the rental suite and a garage in the house, which exists today. We're imitating that here with a garage and the entrance to the house there. There's a porch on the upper level, porch on the, on the main level, I should say. So these are sort of similarities between the houses, so that they look like kind of cousins to each other. The overall scale, shape, and pattern of windows, so it's very important to keep the window proportions similar, so you don't have big expanses of glass next to a heritage house. Window dormers, as I've mentioned, and then the way the cladding is differentiated between the lower floor and the main floor and upper floor. The approach also, we took a little inspiration from French-inspired mansard roofs, sometimes called gambrel roofs, or in a rural setting, you'll see it on barns, because obviously it creates a lot of volume under the roof, so that's why it's used for agricultural buildings. But it's a very common and historic French motif, you see it all over France, and likewise, and it came to Quebec since 1608, when Quebec City was founded. And there's lots of current examples historically in Millardville, as well as some today. But for us as architects, this shape of roof really solves some very challenging massing issues for tucking these duplexes into the site, it's a very steep site, and we have issues with overlook and privacy and things like that, and sun angles, but this roof form really facilitated a really good solution. There's some design precedence, so you can see the upper left, the one in France, the kind of mansard roof there. We've got the twin gables with the ridge parallel to the street. The rectory, of course, for the Église is still existing with its peak dormers. The Allard House is no longer, but you can see the type of porch and the dormers there. In the lower-left photograph, you can see again the rectory here, there's the church foundation. But tucked over in here is a mansard-roofed house with dormers and a porch facing the square, and that's kind of a detail of it here, where you can see the, the shape of that roof. Some existing examples in the upper right, and an early 1900s photograph of Brunet Road. See what the early city government had to deal with, creating roads, not just paving them. But there is a mansard roof tucked in over on the left of that photograph. And then, as we know, Plastizart and the Ryan House, which is now part of that complex, had very substantial mansard roofs. Finally, just the 3D images again, the massing studies that we went through, and how we think it's a, I'm really pleased with how this ended up. It was a real design challenge. You know, we struggled with all kinds of gable roofs on this front duplex, but nothing could work with the slope of the site until we hit on the gambrel roof, the mansard roof idea, and that proved to be the home run, we think, on this one. Just a couple of questions that came up at first reading from council, I just want to touch on with one slide, and that's the concept of distinguishability. Again, standard 11 from the standards and guidelines, which talks about making the additions sympathetic but of their time, and not overwhelming the historic resource, but still echoing it, perhaps playing off some of the ideas of it. And believe me, you get 10 architects or 10 people from the public in a room looking at design, you'll get 10 or 20 independent opinions about what's compatible and what's suitable. So it's a really interesting dialogue. As an architect, for me, that's what makes it fun, working on these projects, is because it's this really juicy kind of design challenge. But that's the concept of distinguishability. Certainly, you do not want to recreate history. This is not Disneyland, we are not rebuilding to look like the old stuff, because obviously then you go through the neighbourhood, you wouldn't know what's old and what's new. And there's all kinds of sort of fake history. There's no such thing as heritage style, that's an oxymoron, right? You can't create history. And finally, there was a comment about the rear of the back duplex, just wanted to sort of touch on that briefly. The existing condition here is this tall laurel hedge on the subject property. There's the house with its rear additions, current additions. There's the site plan of that rear duplex with its, so you're coming up some stairs to a patio at the back, and there's a door into the kitchen up here, a little bit of lawn, grasses and a retaining wall at the back. But on this image, you can see the line of grade for the property to the north, and then the height of the six-foot fence. And so all they're looking at is this mansard roof, and these are windows into bathrooms. We kept them to a minimum at this level, so we feel that it's, and this hedge is probably almost as high as this building is currently, the hedge is probably the height of the new building. So I just wanted to touch on that solution, which we felt is, we didn't want to put too much architectural emphasis on that side, and certainly didn't want to put a lot of windows there. And the final slide is just to show you that there is hope. This was a project in New Westminster, the widow Maria Carey built these twin cottages in 1887. This is their state when we took them on in about 2005. One was 1950s Jetson Modern Renovations. They were both stripped of their modern finishes, up on cribbing for new basements and a new addition, linking the two cottages here into the back, became a 12,000-square-foot supportive housing facility with these two cottages restored. Turned out really well, the community was really pleased with it, as was BC Housing and the users. So just saying, Maison Le Blanc looks like this today, but we'll get there, it'll look like this little gem in a few short months, hopefully. So thank you for your time, and certainly if there's any questions, I can entertain them at this time.
Thank you very much. Twenty speaker I have. Thank you. Are there any other speakers to this item? Are there any other speakers to this item? The third and final time, are there any other speakers to this item? Seeing none, I'll declare this item closed.
Next item, item three, is an application to amend City of Coquitlam zoning bylaw number 3000. In order to rezone the property is at 820, 824 and 828 Carchee Avenue, from RT1, two-family residential to RM3, multi-story, medium-density apartment residential. The bylaw number is 4573.
Good evening again, mayor and council, Jonathan Jackson again, city of Coquitlam development planner. The site is located on the south side of Gautier Avenue, between Blue Mountain and Thrift Streets, and across the street from Alderson Elementary School. You see that outlined in green here. The OCP designation, the site is designated medium-density apartment residential in the city's official community plan. And the zoning of the site and to the west is RT1, two-family residential. The zoning to the north is P1 Civic Institutional for Alderson Elementary School. To the east, the zoning is RM2, three-story, medium apartment residential. And to the south, the zoning is RM3, multi-story, medium-density apartment residential. The site includes three lots, which currently have a one-family dwelling on them. Each lot has a one-family dwelling on it, rather. The applicant is requesting to rezone the site from RT1, two-family residential to RM3, multi-story, medium-density apartment residential, in conformance with the OCP land use designation, to facilitate the development of a 66-unit, four-story apartment building. Staff are recommending second and third readings to zoning bylaw, amendment bylaw number 4573, 2015.
Thank you. We have a list of two speakers, beginning with the applicant himself, Mauro Perizzolo from 4308 Dawson Street in Burnaby. Mr. Perizzolo.
Good evening, your worship, council, and members of the public. My name is Mauro Perizzolo, and I'm here tonight on behalf of Dolomiti Homes, the applicant and developer for 820, 824, and 828 Carchee Avenue. I'm part of the development management team with Dolomiti Homes, and I've been with the company since it was founded in 2010. Dolomiti Homes is a Burnaby-based company, and we're part of a group of companies that have seen almost 25 years of success in the construction industry in the lower mainland. We hope to learn, embrace, and build upon that success into the future. We've been working hard on our first project in Burnaby, and are hoping to make our first project in Coquitlam on Gautier Avenue a success for all stakeholders. In November of 2013, our team began working on a development application for 824 and 828 Gautier Avenue, and after an initial full application was put forth to planning, Dolomiti Homes began discussions with the owners of 820 Gautier to acquire that site so it could be incorporated into a proposed development. As a result, we redesigned our project, and in early June of this year, resubmitted our rezoning and development application to planning for 66 units in this four-story wood-framed building. It is my understanding that on July 6th of this month, council had some questions in regards to the unit mix of this project in proximity to Anderson Elementary, specifically relating to the number of three-bedroom, three-bedroom homes. In the early days of the planning of this project in late 2013 and early 2014, some discussion was had as to what kind of building we wanted to build and what market we were trying to target. Given the feedback we had from our marketing team, we decided to focus on the one- and two-bedroom designs as per their suggestions. Once we acquired 820 Gautier, we felt it was important to retain a similar unit mix in the redesign of the project. Given the proximity to Anderson Elementary, we felt it would be beneficial to the project and community to include some larger three-bedroom units. Based on feedback from our marketing team, they have determined that there is not high demand for three-bedroom condominiums. They have found that in the surrounding area of the 11 three-bedroom units offered for sale, less than half of them have sold since January 1st of this year. Furthermore, their comments to our team have been that the pricing that is needed for three-bedroom homes to be profitable is such that families seem to prefer purchasing town homes rather than similar-sized condominiums. As a result, while there would be some demand from the market to purchase three-bedroom units, we felt it would be limited. Consequently, we've included two-bedroom homes in the project ranging from 810 to 865 square feet. Along with our three-bedroom homes, we are targeting these two- and three-bedroom units to small, young families. Our development team feels that this project is a good fit for this community. We've worked hard with our team and with the city of Coquitlam's planning department to bring forth a strong application. I hope that council and members of the public look favourfully on this project. As I mentioned, I also hope that we can make a success for all stakeholders involved. Thank you for your time and for listening to me speak this evening.
Thank you. Councilor Wilson.
Actually, I have a question for the developer, if you don't mind.
Mr. Perizzolo. Councilor Wilson.
The, you said your marketing team did some research in terms of the three-bedroom units that were for sale. They were three-bedroom condominium units that were for sale that they were looking at?
Yeah, that's right.
And what was the, the general area? Do you, do you know?
Excuse me. They looked in the Mallardville area and also the Berquillam area.
Okay. And do you remember how many units there were for sale?
They mentioned that there were 11 three-bedroom units for sale.
Eleven, okay. Okay, thank you.
Not quite oversupply. Okay, nobody else? Our next speaker is Benny Lam. Mr. Lam? Mr. Lam here? No? Okay. Are there any other speakers to this item? Please step forward. Mr. Boy.
Good evening, your worship and council. The land use designation there.
Ah, yeah. Sorry. You'll, you'll have to give your name and address for the record.
Oh, my name's Albert Boy. I live at 2340 Haversley Avenue, Coquitlam, BC. I've been a longtime resident of Coquitlam, especially since Blue Mountain was a two-way street with ditches on each side, Austin add ditches on each side. My concern about the development is that when you drive around the block, I understand it's going to be all multifamily dwellings. That is not really appropriate, to be next to a school where young children are being dropped off. Anybody's driven down that street, especially when the school's in order, it's unsafe. Hundreds of cars drive down there every day, dropping little fellers off. The second thing is, why I oppose it, is the traffic on Burnett, especially the Burnett Overpass and Blue Mountain and Low Heath at that corridor is terrible. I suggest that this project should be put on hold until we develop our transportation infrastructure. There's no point creating another problem where we're going to have a referendum to see if we'll pay more taxes and vote no. We already voted no. So until we get the infrastructure in place and fix up where Blue Mountain, Low Heath Highway, and Burnett meet and the overpass, I urge you, for safety reasons and common sense, not to approve this project. For further information, I will be letting you know. I intend to find out, since council never reports back, neither does your engineering department, on what those roads were engineered to safely have in traffic. I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers to this item? Are there any other speakers to this item? Third and final time on Gautier, any other speakers to this item? Seeing none, I'll declare this item closed. Now, I'll just remind the audience members that after, about 10 minutes following the completion of the public hearing, we will be considering items from the public hearing, though not necessarily all of them, but we will be considering those items later tonight.
Thank you, your worship. The next item, item four, is an application to amend City of Coquitlam zoning bylaw number 3000. In order to rezone the property at 964 Charland Avenue, from RS1, one-family residential to RT1, two-family residential. This bylaw is bylaw number 4570.
Good evening, your worship and council. This site is located on the south side of Charland Avenue between Le Bleu and Blue Mountain Streets. The site and area to the south is designated neighborhood attached residential under the city's official community plan. The north side of The north side of Charland is designated Medium Density Apartment Residential. Zoning on the site and to the west and south is RS1 One Family Residential. Zoning to the immediate east is RT1 Two Family Residential, and to the north, RM3 Multi Storey Medium Density Apartment Residential. The site currently has a single-family residence. The applicant is requesting rezoning to RT1 Two Family Residential in conformance with the OCP land use designation to facilitate subdividing the existing lot into two one-family residential lots. As a result, staff are recommending second and all final readings to Bylaw Number 4570.
Thank you. We've got two speakers registered. Sean Afsin Amiri is the applicant. He lives at 2859 Walton Avenue, here in Coquitlam.
Good evening, your worship, council. This application brought before, in front of council, a few months ago, and there were some issues and points that came up in the hearing, as well as earlier this month, a few questions by council regarding this application. And we worked through these.
Can I get you to speak louder or lean into the microphone or something?
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
So, in order to address those issues that came up, especially this, earlier this month, in the first and the third reading of this application, I've provided two letters and emails to the staff. I believe you have it. So, I go over five points. The main thing was off-street parking on this property. So, the way we are, application, we're creating more curbside parking because we are removing the access to this property from Charland to the back lane. So, the driveways would be through the back lane. Therefore, off-street, on-street parking would be increased. We are creating curbs and sidewalk and covering the, blocking basically the existing driveway to this property from Charland. So, minimum one on-street parking would be added to existing street, which is Charland. And number two is, the residents of the property would have access to this property from the back lane. The driveways would be through the back lane. Therefore, there wouldn't be any traffic from residents through Charland, and they would be directed to the Blue Mountain Street and going in and out to their property from Blue Mountain. And we are providing three off-street parking for each lot, and as it was mentioned by council in earlier this month, that all three would be in the property, and they are not, none of the parkings, even the street, wouldn't be on the apron, so would be at the side of the parking. So, there's a diagram I provided for the council. I believe you have it with you. And number four, we are creating a hammerhead turnabout at the end of this lane. As it was mentioned by one of the councillors earlier this month, there was a problem going into this lane and backing up. So, with working with the engineering department, development department, we are offering this hammerhead of our property to the lane. So, any car drive to the end of the lane, they can back up through this hammerhead and turn around, come back out of the lane. And this basically would give, in the benefit of the neighborhood, and would give better transit for all the neighbors in that neighborhood. Also, it was mentioned whether I spoken to the neighbors. I have spoken to a few neighbors, and three of the immediate neighbors to the west side, they expressed that they support development and as well as improvement of this property, which improves their Charland Street as well, as well as the lane. I have provided the names and information to the council, which I spoken to them. And also, the other point, when I was talking with one of the councillors on the phone a few months back, 954 Charland, there's a precedent that it was subdivided about eight, nine months ago, I believe. Exactly the same application they had, similar to us, the same-sized property, and it's been subdivided already, so it is there. So, they're going ahead, probably in the next few months, to build two smaller homes in the, two smaller homes in the street. Any other question or anything?
But Counselor Wilson.
Thanks a lot. The drawing you provided, is this one here?
Right.
Is this drawn to scale?
Yes.
So, the garages will be probably almost 40 feet from the lane?
It's about 30-something feet.
Yeah, okay. So, there would be parking in the garage, parking beside the garage, and even parking behind the garage?
One of the neighbors mentioned that they don't like to have a coach house over there, and I mentioned that there wouldn't be any coach house because we are providing that hammerhead. Therefore, it's not feasible, it's impossible to make a coach house over there. The main concern that most of the neighbors, when I spoke to them, it was a coach house being built in that lane.
Right, okay, great, thank you.
Thank you. That's all the questions we have, thank you very much. Our next speaker, Beverly Sewers at 968 Charland Avenue, which is right next door to the east.
Good evening, your worship and council. My name's Beverly Sewers, and yes, I do live at 968 Charland Avenue. When I moved into this neighborhood, it was a really nice...
Sorry, you have to be at the microphone.
Oh, sorry. I went to the computer.
There's a camera up, there's a camera up, there's a camera up on the back wall that's broadcasting this for the internet, so thousands of people are watching.
Oh, that's great, good, thank you. So, when I moved into this neighborhood, it was a really nice, quiet neighborhood. In the last little while, we've lost five houses.
Just grab the microphone, there you go. Perfect.
You can't hear me? I couldn't...
Actually, we could hear you, just, they have to hear you at home as well.
Okay. So, we lost five houses, neighborhood houses, and now we have 88 families living across the street. When that was put up, the street was closed from LeBlu to Charland. We, as a neighborhood, fought for 10 years to have that closed, and you guys said, "No, we won't open it, you've opened it." We now have traffic problems where there's almost accidents happening every day in this neighborhood. I think now, our neighborhood is now not a medium density, it's a high density. There's no parking hardly on the south side of the street. So, and I have phoned the city council, the city about this many, many times, and talked to the engineers about this many, many times. Nobody's doing anything about it. At 960 Charland Avenue, the whole boulevard was bricked right to the street, which we've discussed before. At 956, it's been gravelled right to the street, and at 950, the planters are actually built on the street. So, people are actually parking on the street. So, we're going to put up another two houses, and I know that they say that they're going to have this hammerhead at the back. My house is the house right next door. And what's going to happen is, what people do is they go to the end of the alley and try and, try and back up or whatever. All my fences have been destroyed about three or four times because of this alleyway, and I don't think the hammerhead at his property is going to make any significant difference. The last time we were here, this senor over here, I'm sorry, I don't know your last name, brought up that high-density places bring in higher crime. My neighbor just got broken into two days ago. He's lived there for 40 years and never had a problem. My neighbor next door had his car broken into. Two cars at the apartment building have been broken into. The lady at the apartment building has her furniture stolen off of the place. I didn't buy into a high-density market, and I'm a single parent. I can't just go anywhere. And so, if I'm paying taxes, the other thing that happened is when they built that building across the street, all the hydro poles got put on our side. Every hydro pole got put off to one side of the property. They put it in the middle of my property. And they said it was because of the water lines. The water lines are at least 48 feet away from where I want to go.
Sorry, you're going to have to stick to the, whether or not this is a good land use.
So, there's major parking problems, there's major density problems, there's noise factors that are going on. 88 families instead of five, and people are talking about that it's affordable housing. Try and buy one of those little one-bedroom apartments for $400,000 or $450,000.
Ma'am, you've got to stick to the property we're talking about.
Okay, but what I'm saying is that building two houses on one property is not right. We bought into this neighborhood because it was a family neighborhood. It's, we didn't buy into a high-density place. Our traffic is ridiculous, our parking is ridiculous. And I totally oppose this, I think this is a really wrong thing to do. I, as a taxpayer, my taxes have gone up 300% in 10 years. So, where are my rights? So, I surely hope people hear, I don't think it should go in. And no, it's not true that a whole bunch of people on the block are really wanting this, it's not true. It's just a lot of people don't think that they have a voice or that one person makes a difference. Because I hear people, we've got an elders home at the end of the street. They're walking down the street, they're almost getting run over all the time. People are speeding down our thing. Nobody's done anything, nobody's done anything about this parking. This parking's been like this on this street, and I've been phoning for five years over. So, nothing's being done. And I don't want two houses next to my house. I didn't buy into a huge neighborhood. And you know what, everybody talks about it being affordable, it's not affordable. You can't buy those apartments across the street, and this fellow thinks he's going to sell these places. What do you think he's going to sell them for? Probably a million dollars. So, where is it affordable? And where is it honoring the rest of us neighbors who have been paying taxes forever? And the crime is just crazy now. You know what, we didn't have any crime in our neighborhood before. And I have children, so, you know, I don't really appreciate it. Anyways, that's all I got to say, thanks.
Thank you. Okay, that's the end of our list. Are there any speakers to this item? Any other speakers to this item? Mr. Boye, would you like to offer your thoughts on this one, too?
Good evening, your worship and councillors. My name's Albert Boye, I live at 2340 Haversley Avenue, Coquitlam, B.C. You've all heard me speak before. I spoke against this proposal several months ago. It was defeated. I find it ironic, we have to come again to speak about the same thing. Nothing's changed. I'm upset. You keep densifying and densifying and densifying.
Mr. Boye, the law requires us to accept applications, and a failed application can be resubmitted six months later. So, that's the provincial law under which we're governed.
I accept that. But nothing has changed, this application should be turned down. We still have the same problem. Nobody in Coquitlam looks at the infrastructure and the problems. You keep wanting to raise my taxes, they've gone up 65% in 10 years. If you want, I'll give you the list. And then you have a referendum on land use to raise them even more. When will this council get it through their head? We all don't want densification. Let me give you an example that I'm really annoyed at. I was told Austin Avenue, when I bought my house, would never go through. I paid an extra $5,000 for the lot. It's now an auto bond. My alley's an auto bond.
Sorry, you're going to have to...
Just a minute, your worship, it's about land use, and that's what you're doing...
It has to be about this land use, it has to be about this site.
And it's about this land use.
Okay, then go ahead.
You're going to, you are, you are setting precedent with this land use, to park on the street, to make alleys freeways, and I oppose this constant densification. And this is just an example there. I will also be speaking to Walts Avenue, too, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Counselor Marsden.
Thank you. Question for staff with regards to the parking, going along there. It does appear that the two homes directly to the west of the proponents utilize perpendicular parking, and I recall sitting in the audience when this was before council previously, and the question came about with regards to the perpendicular parking. So, the proposal here is to put in curbs to allow standard parallel parking, correct?
Okay, Mr. Johnson.
Through your worship to Counselor Marsden, yes, that's correct.
Okay, and so, is there anything with regards to addressing the adjacent properties? I appreciate it's outside the scope of this, but in terms of, it would appear then we would have perpendicular parking on two homes, and then convert to parallel?
Mr. DiOzeghi.
Through your worship, should this development proposal proceed, we will require the proponent to provide a design for the frontage improvements, which, as my colleague mentioned, will include curb and gutter on the south side of the roadway on Charland. And because we are aware of the parking issues, we also want to ask, one way or the other, the proponent to continue the design to the west along the frontage of the other properties so that we will have one design for the entire south side. But that doesn't resolve the issue of the parking. So, at council's discretion, we have an opportunity that, prior to developing the adjacent lots, some funding is occasionally available to, in advance, do some of the improvements. So, should this development proceed, should we get the design, and should the need be such that council will consider utilizing that method, then we could actually do some improvements. And that will deal with the parking issues on the south side adjacent to the development site.
Thank you. And just a question, I would believe this would go to planning. When this was, are there any changes to this proposal since the time it was before council six months ago? Is it identical? The proponent spoke to some amendments with regards to parking.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes, through your worship to Counselor Marsden, basically, there are no changes other than showing the parking layout relative to the turnaround and how to manage parking for these two proposed units in a way where you have three directly accessible parking spots to the lane, and also have the turnaround. And the other thing that's changed as well in the neighborhood is the completion of the apartment building on the north side, including the curb and gutter and on-street parking on the north side of Charland.
So, concerns with regard to parking and access in laneway have been addressed, then?
Yes, with this proposal, again, there's a turnaround, and the applicant's proposed parking layout would address that, yes.
Thank you.
Counselor Wilson.
Thank you, I just wanted to confirm, Mr. DiOzeghi, you mentioned that we could do road improvements to the properties to the west of that house? Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct. There is a stipulation, and there's a yearly budget available in the capital budget that preceding developments in areas where are adjacent developments, developed by the developer, we could actually do partial work upon council's approval. So, yes, it's a possibility.
The two houses that we're talking about look relatively new, so I would assume it'd be a while before they would be redeveloped. Does that, does that make a difference?
No, it does not make a difference. In fact, part of the reason for having this fund is that if we have a gap for some reason between developable properties, we can actually complete the works.
And so, if we did that, it would make the road consistent, but it would probably eliminate half of the current parking spots on that street. So, I'm not sure if that actually... So I'm not sure if that actually solves the problem or makes the problem worse. Oh, sorry, I'm getting off the line. Sorry, yes, okay.
Let's try and...
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm done.
Land use. Okay, we good? Okay, you're done, Councillor Wilson?
I'm done, yes.
Okay. Very good. Are there any other speakers to this item? That's fine. You, ma'am, sir, you haven't spoken yet, please.
Good evening, Mayor Stewart and council. I'm the resident right next to the property, west of the property that we're talking about with respect to the parking, for putting to the parking. And I guess with this development, it's usual that they would provide curbs of their own developed property, but not to the properties next to it. So I kind of understand how we are...
Sir?
Yeah.
Okay, no, fair enough. The applicant will be required to put curb and gutter in front of his property. That's a condition of the subdivision. Full stop. I'll get your name and address for the record in a moment. That's all. Council could make decisions to put curb and gutters down every road in Millardville, but that would be a council decision at some point in the future. We've never made a decision like that, and so that's not before us tonight. Tonight is whether or not that's an appropriate land use next to you. And so, and I'll get your name and address, please.
Okay. Name is Rand Jee Campbell, and I'm a resident of 960 Charland. And I agree with Councillor Wilson that removing the perpendicular parking would not increase the parking. Matter of fact, it would reduce the number of parking spaces in front. And one other, one other item in respect of the development in front, the development took place recently, it was completed, and before the development of the road was a cul-de-sac with no exit to LeBlu Street. It was opened up as a one-way access from LeBlu on, and there has been a number of vehicles from the John B Pub and Rona which are going through that actually at a high speed, which could cause accidents. And the other item is people, there's a do not enter, two do not enter signs into it, into onto LeBlu, but there's a number of vehicles that still enter that do not enter way. And including waste trucks from the Ledmac multi-unit building in front. So I'm just wondering if there, if there's developments to go through, if there's any consideration to closing the access to LeBlu again.
Okay. Engineering, was there, was that, was there some discussion at some point about the possibility of this project necessitating the closure of LeBlu?
Yes, Your Worship, we have looked at the situation, and at this point, we are not recommending the closure. We had field observations at the site between the last meeting and the public hearing tonight. And we are of the opinion that those who enter into the do not enter section of this roadway, they do it intentionally. It is well signed, very visible. We also assume that many of the users of the road are locals, or at least those who know this restriction. We are planning to make one improvement in the near future where we will paint a white arrow to the permitted direction of travel on the pavement to make it even more obvious to those who go against the regulations.
I don't know if that will make any difference. They said even before when we did, had the hearing for the multi-unit buildings across the street, we were concerned about the people from the John B Pub and Rona using it as an access way down to Blue Mountain. And that has happened. And I see very few vehicles actually using it to access the apartment building in front. Because it's only like an 84-unit building. And so 84 cars or less, and...
And sir, what we're talking about here, though, is one property that will now be somewhat restricted in the ability to park cars on Charland. It would likely reduce the amount of traffic on Charland by one or two cars. And I, so I'm, we can only consider the impact of this project on that. And you...
Well, the impact is the roadway as well.
This, okay, but, no, I understand where you're coming from. I do understand. But the public hearing is only about the land use on this address. So, and whether or not that's an appropriate land use.
All right, thank you.
Appreciate it.
I want to ask about parking.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Reed?
I would like to ask this gentleman if he could come back for a second. This is land use, and this concerns me. We're putting two new homes in, but with parking off the lane. And you live at 960.
Yes.
Do you have a single-family home?
Yes, I do.
And so your parking's all on-site, then? It's not on the roads?
Yes, we have a driveway at the back.
Off the lane as well?
This is off the lane, yes.
Okay, that's all I need to know. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any people who haven't spoken yet on this item that want to speak? Anybody at all? Nope? Okay, Ms. Stewart, please come forward.
I know this is about the land use, but about the parking about 960, this is the resident that bricked right to the street. And when I asked him one day if I could cordially park at his place, he pretty well threatened me and didn't let me park there. Okay? So that's where the boulevard is, and if he didn't park all his, all his cars, five or six cars, I have to do this. This is my tax money. This is the only thing I can talk about.
Actually, and that's fine, but you can't speak about your neighbor that isn't before us tonight. He's not making an application.
I know, but you know what? With him going to just do one sidewalk or one driveway in front of his house, and then he's got it bricked to the next, and the other person's got it sanded to gravel to that, there's still not going to be any parking. So him going and doing a driveway in front of his place is going to be two parking spaces, big deal. How about the rest of the street? What are we paying taxes for?
So you want him to provide you some parking?
No, I'm just saying that he has to do his. But how, why, why didn't he have to do his then? And why doesn't the other person have to do it? What are we paying our taxes for? Why do we not have a boulevard on that side of the street?
Well, because you haven't paid for one.
One? I'm paying almost $5,000 more tax.
Ma'am, 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 everybody in the city that wants a curb or a sidewalk or whatever, they pay for that. The person that is subject to a subdivision is required to bring their portion of the street up to city standard. If they're simply building a house, they're not required to. Actually, we wish we could require them to, but we can't. So they build a house, they're allowed to leave the city street not curbed and without without...
Well, they've got a sidewalk all the way along on the other side of the street.
They just developed it. And that was a condition of the development.
Well, you mean every street in Coquitlam that has a sidewalk and a proper boulevard, those individual people paid individually?
Almost every place in Coquitlam was either developed...
I don't believe that. I'm sorry.
Ma'am, if you want to ask me questions, I'll try to answer. If you want to cut off my answers, thank you.
No, I'm just saying, I just can't see that. I mean, what are we paying taxes for?
Okay, then I guess I'm...
What do my taxes go for? Does it not go for streets and schools and lighting and stuff like that when we've got no place to park? And why is it allowed that somebody can brick their driveways or gravel their driveways? And then even if I go as a neighbor nicely ask if I can park there, he doesn't want me parking there. So that's not right.
Well, if it's his driveway, I can't imagine...
It's not his driveway.
Well, then why did you say his driveway?
Because he bricked it right to the street.
Okay, so it's not his driveway. It's his boulevard.
It's the boulevard. He should have never been allowed to do that.
Okay, sorry, sorry, you said driveway. My apologies. I took you as saying driveway.
Yeah, I'm sorry, and I probably did.
I get it.
But I'm saying is that, you know, when I brought it to you guys before, you guys have done absolutely nothing about it. So you don't care about the parking and what's going on on this street. And people are getting angry. And people are getting upset. And all kinds of things are going on. Nobody's addressing any of this stuff.
Ma'am, tonight is about the applicant that is beside you, the property beside you, and whether or...
Yeah, well, I think it's a really wrong move.
Ma'am, ma'am, thank you. Are there any other speakers to this item? Are there any other speakers to this item? Third and final time, are there any other speakers to this item? I'll declare this item closed. I want to welcome one of our young people in the audience. I noticed there's someone here viewing democracy and was probably getting tired. And it was a couple, actually, and I thank you very much for participating in democracy. We're good to have you here.
The next item, item five, concerns an application to amend City of Coquitlam zoning bylaw number 3000 in order to rezone the property at 940 Walls Avenue from RS1, one-family residential to RT1, two-family residential. This is bylaw number 4571.
Good evening again. This site is located on the south side of Walls Avenue between LeBlu and Blue Mountain Streets. The site and surrounding area is designated neighborhood attached residential under the city's official community plan. Zoning on the site and surrounding areas is RS1, one-family residential. The site currently has a single-family residence. The applicant is requesting rezoning to RT1, two-family residential in conformance with the city's official community plan designation to facilitate subdividing the existing lot into two lots, two one-family residential lots. As a result, staff are recommending all final readings to bylaw number 4571.
Thank you. And tonight we have Augustino Valenosi, the applicant at 1852 Cliff Avenue in Burnaby. Welcome.
Hi. Good evening, Your Worship, Mr. Mayor, council members. I'm Augustino Valenosi. I've been collecting signatures for support since April. And I talked to all the neighbors around, and I had 37 signatures that they supported my application. I went to the planning to find out if I built one home, what the regulation was. And they told me that I could rezone it and have two lots. And I thought it was a good idea for me because I have two sons on their early stories. And they have a young family, and they live in a two-bedroom condo. And I would like to give my grandchildren a home so they can live in a home. And if this doesn't go through, I can build two homes. It would be one big monster house like the neighbors when I seen it, like each of those big homes, because it's about $2 million home, they cannot afford it for one family. So I noticed that there are two families in there, like parents and sons, they live together. And, and when I was collecting the signatures, there was one open home, big home, and I went to see it. There was a two-bedroom legal suite and one nanny suite. I don't know if it's legal or not. Plus, there was another smaller suite, like, and Realtors say that the two-bedroom, you could rent for $1,250. The nanny suite, you could rent for $950. And the third one, you could rent for $700. So if you look into the, how many cars are in a big home, would be about eight. Because the parents and the son with the family, everybody has two cars anyway. So four in the main house, and probably on the two-bedroom suite could be another two cars, and another two would be four, like eight cars. On the, if this is accepted, build two small home, it would be like maybe 6,000 square feet, both homes. Against the big home is 7,000 square feet or more. And in there, like we supplied, we have a two-car garage at the back lane plus one parking stall for the suite. And the young family, like you have two cars, and one for the suite would be three cars per home. So it would be six cars against eight if it's going to be one big home. And I think it reduced the traffic because a lot of people, they're concerned about the traffic, about the parking. So to park at the, on the lane, they will drive from Blue Mountain to the lane, and the parking is at the back. And the new homes, they have it at the front. And they have a garage, those I seen it, but they use the garage for storage because, I don't know, if they have three suites, they don't have much storage. Like one is legal, but everybody trying to have a couple illegal suites.
Sir, 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 sir. Do you have the address of that project that you're talking about?
Pardon me?
Do you have the address of that project? Can we get the, what is the address of that?
Of my project?
No.
Nine foot?
With the three suites.
Oh, it's all over, like all the new homes.
No, but you were describing one specifically. What was the address?
I don't recall.
Okay.
Because I, it was an open home.
We'll see if we can get it from you later, if you could find out, because we do want to follow up, okay?
Yeah.
But go ahead.
And if you build like we previously, you were talking, you got to have the sidewalk if it's subdivided, and you have to pave the lane. So it will be an improvement to, to, to the area. And two smaller homes, I think will look better than one monster home. Okay. So I, I'll leave it up to you, that's what I can say.
Okay. That's very good. I don't see any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. That's the only speaker I had registered for this one. So this is 940 Walls. Are there any other speakers to this item?
It's a family affair.
They're learning democracy at its best right now. First of all, thank you for taking the time and you guys taking the time to listen to us. We've got some...
You have to give your name and address.
Oh, Sheev Kalamuzane, residence at 909 Walls Avenue.
Sorry, nine?
909.
909, okay.
So we just wanted to, we also took a poll of the residents on the street, and the gentleman that wants to subdivide 46, did you say 46?
Forty-six or forty-seven, forty.
Forty-seven? Thirty-seven? Well, I would like to know of those 37, how many actually live on the street? We did our own poll, and we found that over 63% are opposed to the subdivision. This gentleman talked about cars and traffic. He doesn't live on the street. We've lived on the street for nine years. The house that he's talking about was sold, but there are no extra people... The house that he's talking about was sold, but there are no extra people living on the street.
That house address, I can even tell you, is 919. That's the difference between someone who lives on the street and someone who thinks they know the street. So the house he was speaking about was 919, and also, there is just one family living there. And if he lived on the street, he would know that. And also, in terms of the signatures, there's 25 houses on the street. Walls Street is, sorry, Walls Avenue is a small street. It's a know-through street, which is why we purchased our home there. Our kids go up and down the street, they ride their bikes. Everyone knows us. We know all the neighbors. We know exactly where they stand. We also know the mayor was there on Saturday afternoon. So everyone speaks to each other. So we've also got signatures from the residents that actually live on the street. So I'm not sure where the other 37 people came in, because I've got the actual residents right here.
Yeah, the, just for your own information, it's 18 of the 37, so just over half are on Wall Street, Walls Avenue, rather.
Okay. Also, when he approached my husband, do you want to tell them the story?
So when the gentleman approached me, I don't, I'm not sure what he told the other residents, but when he came to me, he said that he wanted my signature because the city wouldn't allow him to do some renovations. Clearly, that was not forthright in what he was trying to do. And when I asked him, what renovations did he want to do, he didn't know what to say. And then I finally said, you want to subdivide your land. So out of those signatures that he got, I'm not quite sure what was told to them, but I know what he told me was that the city wouldn't allow him to renovate. So, you know, the validity of his signatures come into question, and him not being forthright to me only indicates to me that he may have not been forthright to others on the street and to get the signatures. So that was the one point. The reason why the residents on this street are opposed to it is he's talking about decreasing traffic. Well, it actually increases traffic, because on the street, we've talked to people, and there's another five houses that if this subdivision goes through, they have all indicated that they would like to subdivide their own property. So from five houses, now you're increasing the density, which is now 10, and you're, the gentleman is absolutely correct in saying that there's going to be more cars, and it is going to increase on our street. There are over 13 kids on the street that play. It's a know-through street. They ride their bikes, they come out. On Sunday, our kids went out, and there was another six that came out to play. So by subdividing, it does increase the traffic flow in the area, which we don't want. This was one of the reasons why we did buy this lot in Coquitlam, because it was a know-through street. The lots are bigger, we have green space to play for the kids, and the traffic is local. There's no other people that would come on the street unless you live on the street. And if we, if the subdivision goes through, those factors increase. We have more cars, because now there's 10 houses, and there's secondary streets. Sorry, go ahead.
You can't do the 10-house thing, because this is, there's only one before us now.
Okay, but we've talked to the neighbors, and some of them, if this goes through, they've already said they're just waiting. So if this one gets approved, the other ones will file an application to subdivide. That's all I'm saying.
Okay.
And also, I mean, this, the fact that 928, just not too long ago, asked for the application for the subdivision as well, and now we're already looking, a few months later, at 940, a few months later, the other people that are interested in subdividing, and they're also here, I'm sure, are going to be putting in their applications as well. What's interesting is, is that none of these people actually live on the street, so I'm not sure what that vested interest is. It's easy to say there's $2 million homes, and it's not affordable. You don't even live on the street, for one. You don't know what the community of the street is, two. You're making assumptions, not, not, a single home on the street is sold for $2 million. So again, there is another assumption, that it's just going to be big homes being built. Well, you can, you, everyone has a voice. You can put in whatever it is that you want to say, and get people's input, and bring it forth, and that's what we're doing tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And if you have some paperwork that you want part of the permanent record, we'll just hand it over to Laura. There we go. You kind of went over five minutes, but we'll split it in half, because there were two of you. Counselor O'Neill.
Yes, I'd like to ask the proponent who spoke earlier a question about his petition, just based on the assertions that were made by the couple that were just in front of us, if you'd like to answer it.
I just. I know, I think I know where you're going, and so we'll bend a little bit here. Does the applicant want to step forward and answer a question about the petition simply put?
Yes.
Ms., Counselor O'Neill.
Thank you very much for coming back. Thanks for being here. Now, the petition in front of me with the 37 signatures, it says it's in support of the rezoning to RT1, two-family residential. Was this, when you got the signature, were those sentences at the, was that long sentence at the top of the petition? Did it say, "By saying, by signing below, I indicate my support for an application to change the zoning of the property at 940 Walls from RS1, one-family residential to RT1, two-family residential"? Were those words at the top of the petition when the people signed it?
Yes, it's right there. And I don't know what the gentleman was talking about.
Okay, and then, did you ever tell anybody at the doorstep that it was just for renovations, and the city wouldn't let you renovate?
I never said that. He made it up.
Okay, well, I just wanted to know what your side of the story was.
So he told people lies about.
Okay.
Okay, no, I didn't need that information.
I'm going to ask you what you said.
A specific clarification.
Sorry, sorry.
Thanks very much. That's all I needed to know. Thank you.
So to be clear, did you mention renovations as part of?
I never mentioned renovation. I went to the people with what's on the top and the drawing that you've seen it, and the letter, what we were going to do.
So, so this drawing here was with you and shown to the people at site?
Yes, I showed everyone, and some people, they would asking me question about traffic. And then when I showed the drawing where the garage was going to be, and extra parking, and people told me, that's a very good idea, I can accept that, and I signed it. Because the bigger house, they.
Okay, okay. So you answered a question, and they signed it. Okay?
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Counselor O'Neill, you comfortable?
Counselor O'Neill, are you comfortable with that? Yeah, we're just comparing the two petitions right now, really off the top, as, both from journalistic backgrounds here, so we like to check to see what we're doing, and there's actually some overlap, it appears, so it's. Some people have signed both petitions, both for and against. So it's kind of unusual. But anyway, we can pass it along. It's part of the public record. She put her petition here, we can pass it along here, but.
I don't know how you got the against one, because I don't have it yet.
No, it's just being circulated now.
Just circulated now. It's starting going this way.
The clerk just passed it to us to pass it around, and we're just quickly.
Oh, I see.
Yeah.
Okay, so we don't have copies, we just have the one. Okay. Just a second, please.
So I don't, I wouldn't want to say this is an exhaustive comparison, but we did find one that, somebody signed at least one, and there were two addresses we found, with one, at one of the addresses, the names are different, at one of the addresses, the names were the same, and have signed both petitions, so.
Okay, and I suspect someone might suggest that we explained the other side of it, and they signed our petition as well, because they were against it or something like that. Okay, got it. Okay, I'm just trying to, this isn't our first rodeo here.
Thank you.
Okay. Are there any speakers who haven't spoken yet on this item? Okay, Mr. Poey, come on up here. Tell us that density is bad, and away we go.
Evening, Your Worship and Counselors. My name's Albert Poey, I live at 2340 Haversley Avenue. I know none of you are going to ever ask a question, but I also know not one of you campaigned on high density for any site. And let me get to it. I'll get to what I'm talking about, density and this land use lot. What you do with 940 Walls affects every other lot in Coquitlam Heights. You're trying to stifle my conversation by saying, restrict your comment strictly to 940. Well, I am. You agree to subdivide 940, you'll be agreeing to subdivide property on Haversley for the same reasons. I'm not going to sit here and bore you with going over the density problem and the traffic problem. You're not interested in the traffic problem. You really don't care. Just tell me so. Anyway, I'll save you the embarrassment of having to listen to me for another two minutes. Thank you. Any questions? Didn't think so.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers to this item? Any other speakers to this item? The third and final time, are there any other speakers to this item? Seeing none, I'll declare this item closed.
Thank you, Your Worship. The next item, item six, is an application to amend City Coquitlam zoning bylaw number 3000 in order to rezone the property at 1411 Pipeline Road. This is from RS2, one-family suburban residential, to RS3, one-family residential. This is bylaw number 4572.
Good evening again. This site is located on the east side of Pipeline Road, north of Robson Drive. The site and surrounding area to the northeast and south is designated one-family residential under the city's official community plan. Zoning on the site and surrounding areas is RS2, one-family suburban residential. The site currently is vacant. The applicant is requesting rezoning to RS3, one-family residential, in conformance with the official community plan, to facilitate a subdivision of the existing lot into six one-family residential lots. Staff are recommending all final readings to bylaw number 4572.
Are there any speakers to this item? Are there any speakers to this item? The third and final time, are there any speakers to this item? Mr. Poey? No? Okay, well done. I'll declare this item closed.
Thank you, Your Worship. The next item, item seven, which is the last item on this public hearing agenda, concerns an application to amend City Coquitlam zoning bylaw number 3000 in order to rezone a portion of the property located at 3561 Gisterson Avenue from A3 Agricultural and Resource to RT2 Townhouse Residential and P5 Special Park. This is bylaw number 4532.
This site is bordered by Burke Mountain Creek and Gisterson to the south. The site, the majority of the site is designated town housing under the city's official community plan, as well as environmentally sensitive area along Burke Mountain Creek to the west, and open space under the B.C. Hydro right-of-way through the southern portion of the site. Zoning on the site into the northwest and east is A3 Agricultural and Resource, and to the south zoning is RS2, one-family suburban residential. The site is currently vacant. The applicant is requesting rezoning to RT2 Townhouse Residential and P5 Special Park in conformance with the official community plan designations, to facilitate creation of two townhouse parcels and a park parcel for environmental protection and nature trail. Staff are recommending all final readings to bylaw number 4532.
Are there any speakers to this item? Are there any speakers to this item? Counselor Zerella.
I just had some questions for staff, three specifically. What is the transit availability to this site? What is the access to transit?
Mr. DeZeghi.
Through Your Worship, at this point, there is no transit availability to the site. And as you may be aware of, prior to the referendum, we had discussions with TransLink, what kind of service generally they can provide or will provide in the neighborhood. And with the negative outcome of the referendum, TransLink is in the process of revising their plans. I would imagine that in the future, we will see some service in this area, but I don't think anybody at this point could name a date or even a year when this may happen. At best for the area, what we can hope for is that some of the existing, currently provided services will have some, some greater frequency.
Second question is, what is the closest employment corridor to this site? Like, what are the employment opportunities for people that would live at this site? What would be the closest one?
You mean right now or including future? Okay, right now. I'll go with planning. Mr. McIntyre.
Your Worship, this is one of the first parcels in the Pardon Creek Neighborhood Plan area. And council may recall, Pardon Creek is the fourth of the four neighborhoods, so it's somewhat to the east of the, sort of, the main center. This site would be connected through a road in Gisterson that goes on out to the west. It would access Coast Meridian, and from Coast Meridian, you're on an arterial that take either south down to Low Heat Highway, which is an employment corridor, or Coast Meridian up to David and across through to Coquitlam Town Center, would be another employment area.
And of course, there is a future employment center just north of this, but it isn't, it isn't in place yet. It's future development.
Very true, Your Worship. Good, good point. So this is the first of the parcels on the east side of the creek in this area. To the north of this, again, under the Pardon Creek Neighborhood Plan, there is the Village Center area, and that would be a mixed-use, higher-density concentration, commercial, civic, and residential. In that area, there would be employment as well.
And services? What does this community have for services? Specifically, walkable services would be good? What would be walkable for parks or community center or, like, what services? School? What do they have?
Mr. McIntyre.
Your Worship, again, being the first of the parcels in this area in the Pardon Creek Neighborhood Plan area, it's a little bit of a pioneering effort, if you will. There are established services to the west and south. There would be schools and parks, Lee Elementary, for example, just a little bit to the, to the south and east, along with Victoria Park. But really, the, the main center for this neighborhood, and for that matter, for Burke Mountain, would be the Pardon Creek Village Center, which would just be a couple hundred meters up the, up the road, north of the site, in that area. And there would be, under the plan, there was envisioned a community center, there would be park space, and a full range of commercial services there.
So I said I had three questions, but I got one more. What's the timing on this Pardington Creek services, then?
It's planned. It's, this would be, as I said, the first site in this area. I understand that there is some planning underway, looking at that, that, some concept options for the Village Center. And I guess market forces remaining strong, development would carry on up the hill into that area. So within the next couple of years, I think you'd see something happening there.
So in, in less than five years, we'd see something up in Partington Creek? Service area?
Your worship, I'd be looking into a crystal ball. Certainly, the market has been pretty robust in recent years and that carries on. If you look at the pace of mountain or of the development of this new community across the mountain, it certainly has been steady. Whether it's within five years, I'd be a guess, but it's certainly in the near future.
Okay. Yeah. Of course, commercial is one of those things that requires people. No one's going to build any commercial facilities on the, on the, in Partington Creek until there's a certain amount of density around it. Chicken and egg sort of thing here, do we build the density and, or do we wait for the commercial, which won't get built unless the, the housing is already there, of course? We have to have some. Okay. Are there, we'll try one more time. Are there any speakers to this item? Are there any speakers to this item? The third and final time, are there any speakers to this item? Seeing none, I'll declare this item and the public hearing closed. We'll reconvene in about five, Counselor Reed says five minutes and we'll reconvene as soon as we can.